I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of City of Victorville, and City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Also at the same time, I'd like to call to order the notice and call the special meeting of the City Council of City of Victorville. The first item on all agendas is public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, we do have closed session items, and I'll refer to our city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am McCaughlin. We are asking, staff is asking that item number two on the regular agenda be continued. We will just re-agendize that. We do have closed session under City Council, item number three, which is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9A. The parties and the case numbers are all listed set forth on the agenda. In addition, under the special meeting notice, we have a closed session, potential anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9, subsection C. That pertains to one potential case, and at this time disclosing more information about it would be harmful to the city.
All right, at this time we'll enter into closed session, and the, probably if you'll remind me, we're going to-
Yes, at the conclusion of the closed session, the special meeting notice also has an item for the regular City Council meeting agenda that begins at seven o'clock, so that special meeting would need to be adjourned to 7:00 PM to handle that item as well.
All right, so we'll adjourn the special meeting till 7:00 PM to handle agenda item number three on the special meeting agenda. At this point, we'll move into closed session.
I'm here in Redcham. Had council meetings when nobody was here?
Yes.
Can you remember those?
When I was elected, no one was here. I often want to tell these people.
I don't think it's going to get much traction, really.
How hard it is to get the signature?
That was good, by the way. I thought that was very well done. At the right tone.
Good evening. I'd like- Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District, as well as reconvene the special meeting of the City Council of City of Victorville. I'll refer to our city attorney for any reportable items out of closed session.
Thank you, ma'am McCaughlin. There is no reportable action, however, I would like the record to reflect that we did not have any discussion on item number two on the regular agenda. That item was continued. And with respect to item number three, we had no discussion with respect to the litigation of City of Victorville versus Eagle and City of Victorville versus Porter. We only discussed City of Victorville versus I-15, and reiterate, there is no reportable action at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have our invocation and pleasurable legions. Our invocation will be led by Minister George Washington Senior from Burne Bush Church, and pleasurable legions by Victorville Police Chief Captain Cliff Reynolds.
Most gracious heavenly Father, I come to you right now, Father God, just thanking you, Father God, for Victorville, Father God, because you are a true God, Father God. I ask right now, Father God, that this meeting be decent and in order, because you are a decent and order God, Father God. And I pray, Father God, that you open up heaven and pour out the blessings on Victorville, Father God, that there be more jobs, Father God, and everything that they have, that would be done decent and in order, Father God. That you release right now, Father God, the finances, Father God. There will be more jobs, Father God. There will be no shortages in Victorville, Father God. San Bernardino County shall prosper, Father God, because you are a prosperous God, Father God. We shall be victorious, because you are a victorious God, Father God. I pray for all the leaders in charge tonight, Father God, that you would touch their minds and their hearts, Father God. That we have a good time, Father God, in this meeting, Father God. There be no animosity or division, Father God, but it be decent and in order. In your name is done, and I thank you, Father God. Amen.
Have you saved America? How would you save?
Well, this evening, we have several presentations, but I have to tell you, I, as much as I do this, I had to enjoy the process down at the County Board of Supervisors today, because I was down there to be recognized as one of the sixteen healthy cities in the county of San Bernardino, and this proclamation resolution was presented to me, as well as fifteen other mayors, and at this time, because we have officially adopted a healthy city resolution, and we're moving in that direction, I would like to present this, because since I'm the mayor, I need to present it to someone, so Mayor Pro Tim Tavriales, since I received it today. So, Rudy, thank you. All right, yeah, let's give a round of applause. City of Victorville will continue to move in that direction, but just understand and be appreciative of, if you're here tonight, if you actually attended the County Board of Supervisors meeting, they actually entered and started their meeting a half an hour late, coming out of closed session, and then it took, I think, two hours to get through just presentations, so it's quite a difference from a City Council meeting. Anyway, at this time, we have here from our youth advisory committee member promoting one of their fundraisers, CJ Hines. So CJ?
Hi, I'm CJ Hines from the Youth Advisory Committee, also from Victor Valley Christian School. We are hosting a talent show dinner for the youth, and for you guys, to raise money for the police explorers, and it's going to be on Saturday, April ninth, and these are the tickets. They're eight dollars for adults, and six dollars for students and children. What it is, is we as a collective group are coming together and showing off our school's talent, and also other schools' talent, to raise money for these children. And tickets are on sale now, and there'll be also the night of the event, which is at five, is dinner, when it's dinner served, and at 6:30, the show starts.
All right, thank you. I believe in the past, the council has always agreed to buy tickets, so we'll be the first to buy them, and I hope everyone else in the audience will as well. So, thank you very much for all that you're doing in the community. All right, thank you. Also, I'd like to present a proclamation recognizing April 10 through 16, 2011, as Victorville Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and I do have a proclamation here, and also, we do have a special presentation from Suzy from the High Desert Homeless Services that she'd like to come up and make a couple comments about that, so if you'd come up right now, and I could have the animal control officers come on up? Some of the information that's been shared with me, animal control staff collected donations for the holiday food drive, beginning the week before Thanksgiving, and ending the week before Christmas, sending out Theater Brothers every weekend. They donated almost eight pallets of food. Wow. So, High Desert Homeless Services, they're still using some of the food today, right? Still have some of it?
Yes.
And no city funds, no general fund, no any fund, all expended. It was all volunteer hours, so thank you very much for all that you did. This proclamation speaks to that, but I know Suzy also would like to say a few words.
Well, this might not be as fancy as that one, but this is a certificate of appreciation, and it says, "Presented to City of Victorville Animal Control Division for your benevolent hearts and hard work in collecting food for High Desert Homeless Services." At a time when the donations are way down, about sixty percent of our funding we've lost, just from the general population donations, besides all the grants that are being cut, and everybody's hurting, everybody's going through hard times, but when we see a group of people that are just gung ho about taking care of people that are less fortunate in the Victor Valley, the homeless people, we just wanted to acknowledge it, and we just thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move into our City Council and other agency agendas. The first item on the agenda is public comment. I do have several cards. I'd like to remind the public that this is a time and place for the general public to address the Board of Trustees or the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 5495-4.3, state law prohibits the Board or the City Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Board may receive testimony in set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as be necessary by the chair, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the Board, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and the courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. So, with that, we'll move into public comment, and the first card I do have is Al Cotilla. Al?
I want to talk about an article I read in the newspaper about the city might be interested in selling a golf course. So, I went to work, doing my little thing that I usually do, and I got a phone call from people from City Hall telling me to quit, and I wouldn't quit, and then I talked to Doug Robertson on the phone, and he gave me his word that you would never sell the golf course to land developers. They were probably licking their chops when they read this article in the newspaper, thinking they could rip you off, because they know the city needs money. That golf course should always be a golf course. That's probably the best thing in Victorville. I live on it, and I watch it, and I throw people off there all the time that aren't behaving. And also, he gave me his word that the golf course would never be sold to land developers, only to someone who's going to run it as a golf course. So, I would like to have that in writing, and sign by the whole City Council. That way, I know it'll never happen, and they can't be an ending date on it, because he said never. So, I would appreciate that very much, and I'll call next week, and see how soon it's going to take you guys to put a letter together. So, I got proof that it was sent, and that golf course can't be sold to land developers. Now, that apartment building they built down at the end of the street here, at my place, they built, at Riviera Drive, they blocked our beautiful view of the mountains and everything, and they didn't notify. I went through my neighborhood, and no one was notified that they were ever going to do anything in there. And by the way, when I do my little thing, what I do, I go door to door, and I talk to the people. I don't make flyers and throw them out. I go, I walk, door to door, and believe me, a lot, there's probably about five thousand votes on the golf course, and a lot of people surprisingly ask me who to vote for, because they know I do a lot of stuff for them in the neighborhood. But tell Messler the next time he wants to build a Section Eight apartment building, whoever he is, to put it in his backyard, and see how he likes dirty condoms on the front of his house, and broken bottles, and gunshots, and all that going off. When those apartments are open, that's going to happen three times as much where we live. Also, they come around on Monday nights, and empty the barrels, and take all the stuff we put up for you guys to get money with the newspapers and the junk we put in the blue thing. A guy comes on a bicycle with a thing, and he puts it all in there, and they take off. So, Messler, I don't know where the hell he ever got that idea of building, but no one that I know was ever notified that that building was being put up, because I went and asked all the neighbors. Not one person knew about it, and they're supposed to let people know three to eight hundred feet away, and it was done with the last regime, so I understand it.
All right, Al, that's your thing.
Jim Kennedy, you got my apology.
Thank you. Norm Miller? Norm Miller?
Can't read without those babies.
Mayor, council members, not too many tonight. Since she's been here, a new councilwoman has stated that she wants to change culture in the City Hall, and she seems to be doing just that by polarizing the residents of the city, demoralizing the staff, and demeaning the management and City Council members. She's been making false accusations, lies, and ignoring the truth. She continues to complain about how the city is being run, when in truth, it's better than when our last city manager was here. Prior to leaving the city, our current city manager did a great job helping this city grow. He left, and John Roberts came on the scene, and so did a lot of crap. He signed many contracts without the City Council's knowledge or consent, and that's history. He left hurriedly a few years ago when he saw some handwriting on the wall. The council asked our previous city manager to come back and help straighten things out, and he's been doing just that until you came along, and started trying to undo all of his and his management's good work. Apparently, you only look at the bad history and not the good history of Victorville. You should start doing your homework, and work with the present. Put make in charges that Captain Reynolds and his staff screwed figures about the eight deputy positions. Captain Reynolds sent those figures to the sheriff's, and his staff had them verified as being correct. It also seems that if the other council members, that if the other council members don't vote your way, you and your backers want to recall these numbers. I say, let's recall Angela Vias. Let's start moving forward again, and if you and your committee can't get the agenda done in time, then you should not have run for office. Also, only some of the voters voted for you, not your committee. Thank you.
Dorothy Niner?
Hello, Mayor and Council Members. I have a little thing to bring out. We have some things going on, that we feel that our police department's not doing their work, they're not doing this, and they're not doing that. Well, you know what? I think whoever says this needs to go to Apple Valley, they need to go to Hisperia, and see all the things that they are involved in, with all the crime and everything. This city is not near what's going on there, from what is in the paper and everywhere else. And then we have some recalls going on, just trying to find out the time and date and where. You know what? No one seems to know. It's all hidden, and I don't feel council members should hide what is going on. We need, the people of this city, needs to know what's going on, and you guys are not pushing it, we're just going along with whatever, and we need Mrs. Vias to take care of the things that she needs to take care of, or she needs to step down. She's not doing her work. The people that's on her group is going through the agendas and doing her work for her, for her to set up here, and go along with whatever she wants done. Now, these police officers are very, very good. I've seen them, I've seen them in action. We've had problems out there where we're at, and boy, they're there in no time. So, you guys need to see to it that things straighten out, and things get going in the right direction. Thank you.
Karen King?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here on behalf of Excelsior Charter School. On May 27th at 10:00 AM, Excelsior's putting on a, Excelsior's Memorial Recognition Event. What you're receiving right now is actually a flyer for the event. What we're actually doing is any resident within Victorville, Hisperia, Adelanto, Apple Valley, Barstow, or Phelan that has a deceased veteran family member will receive a free plaque, providing that they submit the information by April 15th. On that event, what we're actually doing, we're starting the event out with a veteran skydiver group. It's five members jumping in with the American flag, followed by the United States Marine Corps Mounted Color Guard going to do the flag rendition. Also, that day, we're also recognizing over three hundred and fifty new recruits from Victorville, Hisperia, Apple Valley, Adelanto, Barstow, and Phelan that are entering the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, Coast Guard, or National Guard. And so, what I'm here to do today is to invite the public to the event. Also, we sent out invitations to everyone on the dais. We hope that you actually come. We see our city has a tradition of honoring veterans by looking at Frank Figueroa's placard that's hanging above the, on the wall. So, the event, like I said, is on May 27th at 10:00 AM. That's when the skydivers will jump. We're also doing a canned food drive that day, with the recipients being the Barstow Veterans Home. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I have a question, but I'd like to commend you and your organization for doing this. I know you and I've had some correspondence back and forth. My granddad flew P-51s in World War II over Germany and was shot down, prisoner of war, was rescued, and delivered back to us, but I just appreciate what you're willing to do for those that have served so dearly for this country, and sacrificed their lives, and I know Mayor Pro Tim Tavriales has served in the Marines, and I'm sure he's got some comments, but I just, I think it's a great thing, what you're doing to recognize those families who have deceased veterans, and I will be there. I plan on being there. I'm just trying to find a good picture of my granddad to get to you, so. I've got all the information, I just don't have the picture, so.
Well, I think the mayor has said it very ultimately, you know, our freedom is only, we're only free because of those who have served before us, and those who are serving currently in Afghanistan and Iraq, Libya from the air, but certainly, veterans need to be recognized, and I applaud you for that. I know Jim Kennedy is also a Vietnam veteran. Mr. Cox is a Navy veteran, and we appreciate that.
Mike Rothschild is a Vietnam veteran as well.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for your service, too. Thank you.
Larry, it's been a while since I've called you, but-
Larry Kempton.
I'd recognize you when you come back into town.
Oh, I don't get to town that much, that late in the evening. Anyway, Mayor McKitchen, council members, my name is Larry Kempton. I don't live in Victorville anymore, still own a house here, unfortunately, but I understand that there's going to be a little recall adventure maybe here, and I have a little experience in that. I also want to take the time to talk about another individual in the audience. Jill Brady happened to sit next to me, and I really feel blessed about that. Anyway, enough of that. The recall that I read, that read the information on, I wanted to find out some legalities here. When I was here all the time going to meetings, if you were elected to the City Council, if you served four years, you received two years health insurance paid. Is that still in effect?
All the City Council members receive health benefits from the city, at least it offered.
But after they're out of office, they used to have added two years to their health insurance.
I'm not aware of anything like that.
I'm not either, but I'll check it out and get back to you, but I'm not aware of that. That is something that, it could cost the city a lot more than an election, if that is true, unless it's part of the recall against, and I, I would not have a problem with recall against Mike Rothschild. I do have a problem with Rudy and Mr. Kennedy being a part of the recall. Mr. Kennedy was adamant about the water company, and boy, I wish things would have been left alone there. They'd still have money, and we would never have had our water turned off, probably, either. They lost the, they lost our address. Can you believe anybody losing my address? They did. Anyway, only in Victorville. Again, I did receive the paperwork tonight on recall Victorville. It should be recall Nike, and hopefully, he's listening to me somewhere, and he will get back to me, either here or in the paper, but I can't hardly wait for that. Thanks.
Alon Linares?
Evening. My name is Juan Linares.
My name is Juan Linaris, and I wasn't really gonna, I was gonna pass on my comments, but I feel I was going to anyway. My comment has concerns at the, at the March fifteenth council meeting. Mr. Rothschild commented that if he had known the cost of the eight deputies, he would not have voted yes on that issue. Or yes, he did take the blame for that error. However, did you all not hear the chief say at the March first meeting that, quote, "The exact cost would be one million thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-nine cents"? And did you not hear that comment by Mr. Kennedy that he had spoken with the chief, and the chief provided to him an approximate breakdown of the cost? What were you all thinking about during the discussion? In my opinion, the comment and subsequent decision to rescind the previous action to hire more police was to me as a resident, embarrassing, insulting, shameful, and appalling. It was unethical, unprofessional, and irresponsible behavior that should have been taken place behind closed doors, not at the public forum. It sends a clear message to anyone that would be considering working in for Victorville that we are not a man of our words, that we will hire you today, but you may be gone tomorrow. I know that if I was looking for a job, that would certainly be on the top of my list of things I would consider, a job with no security. All agrees all options should be considered before spending any money. You need to explore and review options, discuss the pros and cons of the issue, and not make hasty and quick decisions. Get the total picture. Yet, when the city manager asked for an independent salary survey without a fiscal impact review, the council was ready to vote right now. No questions, no fiscal impact statement, and no review. Let's do it right now. That was the comment that was made. In my opinion, the city manager, with his experience, should not have made the request without a fiscal impact statement because he knows it would cost the city money. And second, the council should have known what was going, that it was going to cost money. After all, I can say without fear of contradiction that this was not the first time the request for an independent survey had been on the agenda, and all the council members know that it was going to cost money. So why did it take seven people twenty-three minutes to figure out that it could be done for free on Mr. Cox? The original cost that we were discussing was thirty thousand to eighty thousand dollars for the survey. The council stated that two hundred plus workers were laid off with a prospect of further layoffs. Yet, the payroll increased from forty-three percent to sixty-five percent according to the city manager. Why? There was no discussions, comments, or questions about the increase, that just, that's just the way it is, it seems to be the consensus of the, of the, uh, council members. Other than laying off workers, there was no public statement, or has been called public statement or comment, on what other cuts or options are being considered. I totally agree, and I understand that running the city is difficult, and there are many challenges and things to consider. At the same time, I personally feel that the council needs to hold people responsible and accountable for their actions or inactions. We are doing a better job, we are doing a better, we are doing better should not be the standard to, for a pay increase or being kept out of job. It is not how many people you have to do the work, it's how you manage, supervise, and task the people that you have to do the right work. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linaris, and, uh, I did read your comments on the back of the card. Apparently, you turned in a card previously, uh, at the March fifteenth meeting, uh, but for whatever reason, you were not heard, so.
Yes, I did. I only put that on there just as a, what, it was one of those things that happened.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Uh, Jose Dominguez?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Ekron, Mayor Protim Cabrealis, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, Administration. Uh, my name is Jose Dominguez, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for Adelanto School District. Uh, here this evening with me is, uh, Debbie Budd, our Director of Facilities, uh, Pepper Jones, a member of our Board of Trustees, and Darren Brawley, our Superintendent of our School District. Last year, December two thousand and ten, we were victim to flood damage caused by a severe rainstorm. The damage amount is approximately six point two million dollars to our school facilities. The two sites that were mostly impacted were Columbia Middle School and Teddick Elementary. I've included, uh, some pictures, which our Superintendent will review with you, uh, later. This damage directly impacted children in our community. We have had to relocate students to different classrooms, set up a temporary computer lab and a temporary library. I'm here this evening with a, with a sense of urgency and, uh, need your support because the, the water is coming across Palmdale Road from the Victorville side and flowing onto the Adelanto side of the highway. The water is not flowing into the Verbena Wash as, as it was initially built to capture the natural, uh, drainage of the, from the desert. One main cause is the development of curbing and paving of Montez Vista and Maricopa that did not allow water to drain into the desert. This diverted water from its natural drainage course and sent it down the street in the direction of our school sites. We have met with your City Engineer Department, and they informed us that there are a pair of coverts that are on Montez Vista that are not functioning or complete. This is also a great area of concern. We are working with the City Engineer Department to establish a preventative plan for future damage caused by flooding. We understand that needs your approval to complete such an action. Uh, we believe this work can be completed under the local emergency resolution that this City Council passed on December twenty-third. Therefore, it should not require further action from the City Council. If not, I would also like to request to be put on the next City Council agenda to discuss in further detail. And with that said, I'll, uh, invite Darren Brawley, our Superintendent of our School District.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, councilmen, and councilor. In front of you, you have some pictures that we provided related to the damage that has occurred within the Adelanto School District. You heard, uh, previous testimony from our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Dominguez, about the amount of damage that occurred this year. Uh, actually, add two more million on top of that. This is the second time that this flooding has occurred. First time was in January of two thousand and ten. The impact was to the same two schools, Teddick and Columbia Middle School. You have pictures that are showing you the water that was left over the day after the rain stopped. So imagine how bad that flooding was when the rain was actually coming down. So, January of two thousand and ten, two million dollars worth of property damage to Adelanto School District. December two thousand and ten, another six million dollars worth of damage. First time around, we exhausted our JPA's fund. They had to go and kick into the secondary carrier. They had to do the same thing this year, and that is Lloyd's Blondin. And now, they're involved legally to try and recoup six million dollars that they paid out this year. We're engaging in discussions with the city of Victorville so that we can all try to mitigate any possible future damages, and also mitigate any liability that may be coming our way, your way, you name it. This is a severe problem. Adelanto serves, uh, students within both Adelanto and Victorville, and we believe that this is a problem that could be resolved, and we believe that your city engineers, half to my dearest, and with your blessing, we believe that we'll be able to accomplish what needs to be done to prevent it from occurring in the future. Thank you.
Uh, Tom Forte? I always get that wrong. I'm sorry, you haven't been here in a while, and, believe you me, I know better than anybody how butchering a last name...
It's a hard one, isn't it?
Well, Macacron is not any easier, so.
(laughing) Good to see you. Yeah, um, you know, I don't understand why is it that when people run for public office, that once they get in, they have no idea why they're there, besides for photo ops and stuff like that? Because I don't see anybody doing anything for the people here in Victorville just panning out where the dam. What the city needs to do, which I told some of the council here last year, best thing that they can do is file for bankruptcy and quit. Now, this forensic audit that you, that you said that you wanted, and then after it got started, you said, "Oh, no, it's gone far enough"? No, you, you can't do that. If you start a ball rolling, you have to let it go, no matter where it rolls. The people in the city have a right to know how far we're buried. And you, it's, and nobody's doing anything. You need to get rid of some of this stuff. You need a million, a nine million dollar, uh, clubhouse over there at the, at the golf course? I don't think so. That's preposterous. When somebody believes that figure, they'll believe anything. Why not try and leave a legacy of honesty and put some, put something in here that the kids of tomorrow will look forward to, a boys' and girls' club, not debt above their head for the next fifty years? Why not act like human beings instead of looking for photo ops and patting yourselves on the back? Because that ain't happening. Get rid of the stuff you don't need. You know, like the water treatment plant, that's a winner. You know, and if you start on something, finish it. The Niscwali overpass, uh, pigs will be flying before that thing's done. You really have to pay attention to what's in front of you. You can't go in the back, say that was nice, and go down the street. Finish what you start.
Aaron Corn?
My name's Aaron Corn, I'm a Victorville resident and small business owner. Um, I'd like to address the performance of the council, especially the long-time members, um, particularly the proposed recall of the three council members and, uh, related support from Dan Tate. Uh, Councilmember Rothschild was quoted as saying that, uh, Dan Tate has gotten two council members elected so far even though he does not live in Victorville. So I take this threat serious, uh, seriously. Um, in the time since Mr. Tate, quote-unquote, got two council members elected, uh, my research and brief, uh, conversations with him has indicated that, uh, he's never received any financial perks from the city related to projects he had in front of the council. Uh, in fact, in speaking briefly with Mr. Tate, the one project he's had in the city ha, uh, actually resulted in his paying, uh, nearly half a million dollars in developmental impact fees. So, um, if he bought two councils, or, uh, two seats on the council, he got ripped off. Um, interestingly, most of the council members have received campaign contributions from folks like, uh, Buck Johns of the Inland Group, Sterling Capital, uh, among others. Uh, now, these are companies that don't just do business in the city of Victorville, they do business with the city of Victorville. So they've actually benefited by receiving millions of our tax dollars on city projects, several of which are troubled, to say the least, and it's not compe, uh, complete failures. Um, yeah, rather than penalize these companies, we continue to pay them millions more. Uh, why? Why does this council continue to throw money away on dead-end projects instead of investing in our community by supporting public safety? So, uh, on a different subject, I see on the closed session agenda, which I think has been continued, um, item two under SCLAA, uh, that there are negotiations regarding property at SCLA, and I really hope the council steps back and takes a look at the big picture before approving any expenditures related to acquiring real estate or entering any, any new, uh, business ventures. Um, the citizens are watching and will hold you accountable for your actions. So, and, um, one last thing I want to say again, that I favor an RFP to go out for legal services. Um, if the RFP reveals that Mr. Dubornowski is, uh, doing a fabulous job at Rock Bottom Prices, then the council can say they did their due diligence. Um, but, uh, I think a good analogy is if I were paying five thousand dollars for cable TV and all my neighbors were paying fifty dollars, I'd start evaluating my options. Thank you.
All right, that is all the cards I have under public comment. Anyone else wishing to address the council under public comment? Thank you, no one? We'll go ahead and move into our agendas. Uh, the first agenda is Library Board of Trustees. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
We do have the consent calendar?
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Our next agenda is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
And we do have the consent calendar?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
We'll now move into the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority agenda. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
Do you have the consent calendar?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
We'll now move into written communications. Uh, Agenda Item Number Four is the Presentation of Possible Action Regarding Addendum Number One to Promissory Note dated March sixteenth, two thousand and ten. Do we have someone, uh, from staff that's presenting this?
I think, uh, this, uh, request is normally held by the Redevelopment Agency, but in this particular case, uh, he is not available. In the case of the refund, the City Council has adopted a policy that individuals requesting a refund would get that refund, uh, if in fact the refund had, or if in fact the transaction had been completed, uh, after, that they had received notification from USCIS that they were going to terminate that program, and this is merely a request to get refund. In accordance to council policy, it takes council approval to return the money to those individuals.
And that would be the same for Agenda Item Number Four and Five?
That's correct.
All right, it's before the council to, uh, return, uh, money's on Agenda Item Number Four.
I'd just like to say this is, uh, another failed project involving Buck Johns.
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
All right, same request is before the City Council on Agenda Item Number Five.
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, this is a companion item to City Council I, Item Number Seven. This is a request to approve an extension to the current facility use agreement with Boeing Company, uh, for the Boeing seven-eight-seven Dreamliner, uh, test flight, uh, program.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
And Agenda Item Number Seven, Related, which is a request to approve an extension to the current facility use agreement with Boeing Company for the seven-four, seven-eight-hundred aircraft, uh, flight test program.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Just to comment on those last two agenda items, uh, it is estimated, and I know Sophie's here, I know Mr. Messler's not, but that Boeing, uh, creates some six hundred temporary jobs when they're here, uh, flight testing their aircraft, and so we want to continue to be friendly to them and have them continue to come back. Uh, those are, are great jobs to have in our area, so, and we want to thank Boeing for continuing to come here. Uh, we'll move on to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
Do you have the consent calendar?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor McEckron. Motion carries with Mayor Protim Cabrealis and Councilmember Rothschild absent. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis and Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Was yours a yes vote? I've recorded the vote already, so I'll note it for the record that it was a yes vote.
All right, Agenda Item Number Four, uh, I will have to abstain from because Bradco is a, is a client of mine. So, uh, we will wait, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis's return, and then I will leave the rouse.
We have Item, Item Number Four. Request to approve the professional services agreement between Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Bradco Companies for appropriate services.
Mr. and Council, um, this matter was, is a redevelopment agency item, um, to dispose of land that's owned by the RDA. The matter was handled by John Mendiola, who's the purchasing officer. I thought John was here, he was not, my apologies. Um, this is three specific pieces of land that's located, uh, in the agenda. Seven point eight five acre industrial site at Foxborough Industrial Park, ten point two nine acre industrial site at Foxborough Industrial Park, and fourteen point two nine acre commercial site south of Victorville near Eucalyptus and I-15. Uh, in accordance with House Council policy, that if we have assets that can be sold that do not have an immediate use, uh, this is the attempt to do that. Um, we, the purchasing department went out for RFPs. They also placed an ad in the Daily Press, and they placed an ad in the Sun Telegram. And there were individuals who had previously notified the city that for those kinds of services, they wanted to be notified. And I don't have the list of those individuals that were actually notified. In addition, uh, to the notices that were in the newspaper, it was also placed on the newspaper, uh, in the city's website, my, excuse me. Uh, as a result of that, uh, staff looked at, looked at individuals who had submitted, uh, the proposals. And after discussing the matter with the individuals that had, that had submitted the proposals, uh, they recommend awarding the contract to Bradco Companies based upon the listing price of the property, commission rates, and, uh, their experience in the community and dealing with land and property. Um, I believe that covers the item at this point in time. This is the contract for professional services, which is a, a professional services contract. And upon the approval, uh, should the council go along with staff recommendation and approve the contract, then Bradco Companies would be responsible for, uh, marketing this land. And I noticed that, uh, Joe Brady representing Bradco, uh, is here. If there are any questions relating to, uh, his proposal.
Uh, this contract, is it, um, to sell land or to buy land?
Sell.
Do you have a question? That's motion and second?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern and Councilmember Rothschild absent.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. This is a request to approve Amendment Number, uh, One to the Memorandum of Understanding By and Between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Mary, Maranita Development Company, Inc.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question. Have we, have we established funding for the Nisqually interchange?
For Toffey, uh, someone, uh, discuss the subject, please, for the benefit of the council.
Um, I'm not sure about the funding for the Nisqually interchange. This agreement here is actually for the remnant piece that would be left once the interchange is built. So, the term is for, is for three years from now, um, at which time the fate of the interchange would have been decided, and this piece would be left. So this MOU specifically covers what would remain after the interchange is built.
If the interchange is built.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no, and Councilmember Rothschild absent.
We will now move on to the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority Agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
Do you have a consent calendar?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
All right, moving on to the Victorville Water District Agenda. Do you have any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
Uh, we do have a public hearing. Uh, Agenda Item Number Three is called to hear arguments for and against proposed ordinance number VWD dash zero zero four and request to continue this hearing to the May third, Two Thousand and Eleven meeting.
Mayor McEckern, since I believe Councilmember Vias may have a conflict, uh, and you, I would assume, going to open a public hearing, I would recommend that she recuse herself.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Three. At this time, anyone wishing to address the, uh, City Council on this item? Agenda Item Number Three. If no one, I will, uh, move to continue this item to May third, Two Thousand and Eleven. Yeah, it doesn't even need a motion. We'll, uh, go ahead and move into our consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Under Written Communications, uh, this is a request to adopt Resolution Number, uh, VWD dash eleven dash zero zero three entitled, "Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District Establishing and Adopting the Annual Appropriations Limit for Fiscal Years Two Thousand Eight, Two Thousand Nine, Two Thousand Nine, Two Thousand Ten, Two Thousand Ten, Two Thousand Eleven."
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Moving on to the City Council Agenda, are there any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
Do you have a consent calendar?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis.
I'd like to make a statement that, uh, here again, we pay a hundred and twenty-one thousand to the city attorney just for this month.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Uh, Agenda Item Number Four, under Written Communications, request to, one, approve additional appropriations in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two ninety-nine, and two, reduce the revenue budget by one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars in order to align the budget with year-end projections.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, uh, in speaking to the, uh, resolution given to the city today by the County Board of Supervisors, I request council to adopt council policy regarding vending machine nutrition.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question. Why, why is this a council decision and not just a management decision to, to just put in something for everyone?
It's directly, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
That's because it's a policy, uh, and management staff is not able to make policy. We're here to enforce policy that is set by the council.
I, I just, I'm struggling with, um, it being a governing decision to control diets. I mean, that's not what I ran for. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Six is request to approve Amendment Number One to the settlement agreement in mutual release with Walters Power International, LLC, to clarify the methodology that will be used to calculate the storage fees under Section Seven A of the agreement, and accommodate an extended payment schedule for the five hundred thousand due under Section Two C of the agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Uh, we dealt with, uh, Agenda Item Number Seven. Uh, Agenda Item Number Eight is request to appoint myself as the city's delegate to the SCAG General Assembly. I will be attending as I'm a member of the Transportation Committee, uh, for Sandbag. So I'll be there anyway, unless any rest of you would like to go.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent.
All right, and before we get into council reports, we'll deal with, uh, the special, uh, meeting of the City Council and Agenda Item Number Three on that, uh, council, uh, meeting, which is discussing and possible action regarding funding for the Lamesa-Nisqually interchange. If I could have an introduction to this item by Mr. Cox, and I'll add to it as I see fit.
Mr. and City Council, for some time, staff has been, uh, discussing the finances of the city and lack of finances also. In regard to this, uh, Lamesa and Nisqually, uh, we raised this issue, uh, at the time that we were constructing the wastewater plant at the base, and that funding was going to become short on this item. And as the council is aware, one of the requirements wants to come up with a funding plan. Uh, previously, the city engineer had worked with Caltrans, uh, to get the city staff designated to oversee this, but there is a requirement that we had to go to bid at the end of this fiscal year, which is ends June thirty. Otherwise, several things would occur. One is a complete, the, the, the Nisqually interchange plans would have to be completely redone, uh, as they are, they, they, it, because this is a policy of, of Caltrans. Caltrans had, we had received notification from Caltrans that they were going to discuss the matter with Sandbag because we did not have a funding policy in place. And staff had been discussing, uh, and negotiating with Apple Valley and the County of San Bernardino as a result of the proposed, what is referred to as the Green Tree Extension. It's really not, it goes into Hisperry Road into Yacaloma in Apple Valley. Apple Valley is moving ahead on that. And as a part of that particular corridor improvement, it has to connect, uh, to the Lamesa, the Nisqually interchange, or it would not make any sense. And members of the council had objected to dump the traffic onto Green Tree Boulevard. Part of the traffic patterns and studies that were completed in the past showed that Apple Valley would have an improvement to the roadway system, including Bear Valley Road, and as a result, would pay, uh, a little over six million dollars into the interchange project. Apple Valley and the, uh, council and, uh, Apple Valley staff and the staff of Victorville were negotiating an agreement, uh, with the County of San Bernardino. And Apple Valley's request was that their six and a half billion dollars, plus or minus, um, be used on that project rather than Lamesa, with a concern expressed that the Lamesa, that the Lamesa-Nisqually interchange may not be built. And therefore, uh, they wanted the money to ensure that it was a corridor project so that not, so that it would only become effective if everything was built, not just the interchange or just the extension of Yacaloma into Hisperry Road. Approximately one week ago, uh, was requested by the mayor to attend a meeting with Dwayne Baker, Debbie Barmack of, uh, Sandbag, and Supervisor Sean McGlade, Doug Roberts and I. And at that meeting, it was discussed that because of moving ahead with extremely rapid, uh, timelines, unless the city was simply going to abandon the project, there had to be a plan that was on the table immediately that everyone would agree to. Just as a reminder, the citizens of the desert and the county voted for a major "aye", which is a half cent sales tax for road improvements. Those funds are collected and controlled by Sandbag and then, uh, distributed to the cities. The cities in Victorville have a major project portion for major roads that originally was estimated to be about three hundred million. It's now been, uh, that figure is less now. And, uh, the mayors of Hisperry, Apple Valley, Victorville, Adelanto, and the county supervisors some time ago agreed that, rather than divide that pot, that money on a population basis or a source basis, that it would be divided twenty, uh, twenty percent for each of the five entities. And, uh, at that meeting, there was an agreement that Victorville would allocate that major portion, and that Sandbag would, could take the project, move forward and meet the deadlines. Victorville would be required to submit the dollars that are available. And Mr. Doug Robinson is not only working on that, but I believe he has submitted a memorandum to the, uh, City Council indicating the amount. And if there is a shortfall, then Sandbag would collect that from the future year's allocation and avoid the city of Victorville entering into any further debt or selling bonds. As a result, they would be able to, if we arrive at this agreement, we would be able to move ahead with, uh, uh, sending all the paperwork out to bid by the end of this year. Uh, the second thing would occur is that it was necessary for Victorville to give up as the lead agency that was given from Caltrans to Victorville through the efforts of our city engineer, Sean McGlade, and by council action to assign that, uh, to Sandbag. Uh, we don't, do not have the final agreement in place. Uh, it is still being discussed, but the first major step for Sandbag to take that action so that they can present their plan to the Sandbag Board is for the City Council to take that action, uh, to assign the oversight, uh, to Sandbag.
Uh, and just to add to that, uh, there is still, uh, much more work that needs to be done on this. Uh, this is not a funding agreement, uh, per se. Uh, actually, funding hasn't been identified. All that I'm asking this council to do tonight in, is to, in essence, hand this project over to Sandbag. Uh, they have a track record of being able to, uh, build these projects, deliver these projects. Uh, they have- Uh, they have the, uh, funding in place to do this project. Um, they have the ability to be flexible with the City of Victorville on our funding for this project. Uh, and I think that those details will still have to work themselves out. But, uh, they are adamant that this project move forward. They've been working on this with the City of Victorville for way too long. Uh, it's one of my major goals is to see this project move forward. Uh, and understanding that, under the current, uh, prospects of this city, it's not likely to move forward, uh, I felt appropriate that we ought to meet with them and see what they might be able to do. Uh, they're willing to take on this project. They're willing to move forward on our behalf and make sure that it's built and completed. So, uh, the only thing that, uh, that we're asking the council to do tonight is simply hand this project over to Sandbag. I think it's the appropriate and the right thing to do. And it's the only way that we can, uh, potentially see this project move forward. So, uh, that's in essence what's before the council tonight. Please understand that any funding agreements, where the funding comes from, and, uh, and all those details will subsequently, uh, subsequently come back before this council for approval.
Uh, Mayor, my, I, I'm struggling with this Nusqually interchange. I really want this interchange. But I also know the history that Victorville has with charging off into the sunset without proper funding for projects. And then later on, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, and next thing we know, we're bankrupt. I just, I'm concerned that we keep moving this forward, acquiring land, spending money, and we don't have funding. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I, help me, help me get past this.
Well, and I understand that concern, and that's why I indicated what I, what I did earlier is that a- at this point in time, uh, all this is doing is giving the authority to move forward with this project to Sandbag. Obviously, the funding still has to be there. We have to be able to prove and provide to Sandbag. And that Board of Directors, which is made up of five county supervisors and twenty-four cities throughout the, the County of San Bernardino, uh, which are not likely to vote in our favor if we don't have, uh, a, a good funding plan in place. Um, there's also been some discussion about future Measure I dollars uh, that automatically come to the city as a ro- result of, uh, the, the voter's passage of Measure I as, uh, supplementing those funds, uh, until development, developer impact fees come in to repay those. Because it has to be from the City of Victorville, it has to be fifty percent developer impact fees. Um, there are also some possibilities out there, uh, from Prop One B funds. Uh, got word from the county today that potentially there might be some money, uh, that would supplant not only the public share, which is Sandbag, but also our share, uh, half and half. And until those details are worked out, again, I, I don't know that. But again, my whole purpose in bringing this to the council, my whole purpose in meeting with Sandbag, meeting with, uh, the county supervisor, was to figure out a way that this project could mo- move forward without the city being the lead agency. And I think that it's the proper and the only way for this project to move forward. So I, I completely understand the funding question, and that still needs to be answered. Uh, the only thing I'm asking for tonight is that this council, uh, approve Sandbag taking the project over, which will allow them to move forward, come back to us with, uh, some ideas on funding. We'll, they'll work with our staff, our staff will work with their staff, so that we can get to a point where, uh, it comes back to this council and it makes sense or it doesn't. But one way or the other, that funding agreement, uh, will come back to this council. So at this point, I'm not asking you to fund this. I'm just asking you to, uh, recognize that the only way that, that's possible for this thing to move forward is if we hand it off to Sandbag.
Okay, and my question is, so you're taking it out of our engineering department and, and giving it to Sandbag, the engineer, is that what I understand? And so have we done a cost analysis on how much Sandbag is going to charge us to do this and how much it would cost us in-house? And why would we take it from in-house?
Well, uh, no, we haven't done a cost analysis. I think, uh, part of the reason that we're looking at, at this is because our resources have dwindled over the last several years. Uh, we've had several layoffs. Uh, and although Caltrans has given us this authority, uh, there is some question as to whether or not they would potentially withdraw it. Um, and so I'm attempting to be proactive here, uh, with this request. Uh, because if they withdraw it, then it becomes, uh, a dead project. I don't want it to become a dead project. So by handing it off to Sandbag, they will make sure that it continues on. Uh, yes, there is costs associated with that that are built into the project already. It doesn't escalate any costs that are already there. It's already contemplated in the project cost. And in fact, uh, most projects that have come before Sandbag in the last two years that I've been on there are coming in thirty to forty percent under engineers' estimates. So, I mean, we could potentially see a sixty-three million dollar project coming in at forty-five to fifty million dollars. Um, that's potential, I'm not going to promise that, obviously. Until we go out to bid, we don't know. But that's, uh, that's what's going on there and, and basically, again, why I'm asking for this.
Okay, I still don't understand how, if we, if we vote on this to, to give it to Sandbag tonight, how that, how that's going to get us funding? I, I still don't understand that part of it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe Mayor said and staff has said that, under the current conditions, it's a dead project. If we assign this to Sandbag, they have sources of funding that we do not have. We have sources of funding that we can apply to or we can try to compete for. Sandbag is the transportation agency. Sandbag actually collects the, the monies for, for the whole county, for the road system. They leverage that money for the, uh, to use the money for matching funds with federal and state grants. It is our belief that they would have a much better chance of having additional funding. They have actually been in charge of projects and have a staff. They may or may not utilize some of our existing staff on this. But the choice that we have was to determine if the county or Sandbag or some other entity, um, could assist on this. Uh, we believe that Caltrans has worked with Sandbag on several projects and that will ensure their cooperation. Also, if there is a shortage of funds, Sandbag is in the position of putting those funds forward. But they cannot bid the project, they cannot move forward until a funding agreement is in place. The funding agreement is going to be contingent upon Sandbag's approval, the county's approval, and indirectly Apple Valley because of this corridor project. And we believe that Sandbag has the staff and the resources to move this at a point that it's just not a lost project. Otherwise, it's just debt. The concern that we have is that probably in a year or two, if we're prepared to move forward, uh, conditions would change so much, and this, we shared this, uh, concern with Sandbag and Caltrans both, that costs are going to be substantially higher as the recession ends and growth and development starts. And now is a prime time to build the interchange if it can be funded. We actually have to show a funding agreement, the amount of money we'll have available. So even though they will move forward administratively, nothing happens until the sand, until the funding agreement is agreed to and brought back to this council for approval.
Can, can anybody tell me what we spent on this Nusqually interchange to this date?
I don't have that figure on the top of my head. I don't know if, uh, Mr. McGlade has a, a figure in his head that he would care to share. I see him shaking his head no at this point.
Mayor, I'm, I really want this, this interchange, but I feel like the horse before the carriage. I think we, we need to get our, our numbers, a cost analysis, and maybe a presentation from Sandbag. Cause I, I, I don't understand why we have to hand it over and then they're going to help us with funding. Why couldn't it be the other way? I mean, is that the way it is with all cities or is it just us?
Well, we're in a unique situation here just due to the, uh, timelines and the deadline of, um, uh, June and Caltrans requirements that if we're not out the bid, that we have to convert from metric to English on the plans. And that would cost us, I don't know, I've heard estimates anywhere between one and two million dollars and another additional one to two years. Um, not sure if either of those actually apply. Uh, but, uh, understanding the cost of converting, I'm sure that, that that would be there. Uh, look, from my perspective, this is just a philosophical change of the City Council. That we are moving away from, we're going to do it all ourselves to realizing that we can't do it all ourselves. And that we ought to depend upon other member agencies and work with those member agencies to basically take projects forward. Um, you know, I, as being your Sandbag representative and working on the Mountain Desert Committee, I've, I've been working with, uh, the County of Apple Valley and County of San Bernardino to bring the Yacaloma Bridge and the Green Tree Extension across. You know, prior to me being in that position, uh, there was not, this council was not in favor of that. And so I think that's a tremendous benefit to all the residents of the Victor Valley. Um, there are some that argue that it's only a benefit to Apple Valley. I disagree with that. I think it's a benefit to everyone here and that it ought to move forward. But my fear is, is that, you know, if we don't figure out some way to move this project forward uh, by handing it off to Sandbag, then i- in essence, Apple Valley's project may not move forward. Uh, and Hisperry's got some projects in the works that although not connected, are related. They're all east-west corridors. And we need to move traffic and reduce traffic congestion in the Victor Valley, uh, as it travels east and west. And so, um, again, uh, Sandbag has a history, a, a track record, they can deliver projects. And all I'm asking for tonight is that the, that this project be handed over to them so that they can take it forward and deliver it. Uh, obviously, funding is still an issue, still has to be addressed, still has to come back before this council. It is not a done deal by just handing this project over. Uh, but I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, philosophically, it's a change from what this city has done in the past. But I, again, think that, uh, we need to move in this direction and allow, uh, this organization to take it over so that we can see this project move forward.
I have a question for Sean. Uh, the projects of this nature on, on energy change are generally, um, supervised by Caltrans.
Um, many of these projects are in fact, uh, under the direct supervision.
Responsibility, why?
Um, about a year and a half ago or so, uh, we were able to convince Caltrans that we had sufficient staff with the experience, um, to be able to, uh, control our own destiny, if you will, and manage the, the contract ourselves.
Do you still feel that way?
Yes, indeed, uh, I mean, we don't do it single-handedly. We still need consultants to do the bulk of the work. But we would have the decision-making, um, of what happens with the construction contract more directly.
And, and I think one of the reasons was that there was some kind of cost savings in us doing it ourselves.
Yes, it's very difficult to put a number on it, but, um, you know, some estimates are one to three mil- million that we would save by doing it ourselves.
And, and we, and if we allow, um, this agreement go through and we allow, uh, Sandbag to then supervise the, the project, we'll still be responsible for land acquisition, all these other things that go on within.
Uh, certainly, our work would still continue to the point of, uh, getting all of the right-of-way acquired, um, all of the permits in place. Um, uh, the, the way I would see it would be Sandbag would be responsible for the construction, um, which would mean the bidding process, they would hire, um, some level of consultant support. Uh, but, you know, the, the city would still have, um, uh, I would imagine in the, whatever agreement that would be reached with Sandbag, we would still have some level of control over the expenditure of, of our share of the funds.
And, and the funding would still come from Victorville and, and the other, um, whatever federal funds or other funds that are, that are out there.
Yes, uh, again, it's, it's a, a little premature to, uh, we're speculating on what detail may, may be contained in that. But, um, I would envisage, um, the, um, the Victorville share is going to be some kind of, uh, if you will, a down payment and then commitments for other funding to, um, meet our obligation. Um, and hopefully, we will be able to keep pace with that obligation from revenues that would come in over the, uh, construction period. Thank you.
Just for, um, in council's information, under Measure I, the desert is treated differently than the valley in that, in the original agreement, some, what, twenty-five, thirty years ago, um, the Measure I issue initially failed. The fear from the desert cities was that they would take the sales tax portion that would go into roads improvement. It would go into the county transportation system and wouldn't get back to the desert. It was with the assistance of the desert cities that we have the formula that we currently have. But in the valley, it is a Sandbag project. The cities do not get the money direct. And therefore, when you see the interchange programs or whatever you see in, in pro- road improvements, those are Sandbag projects. And the Sandbag, like projects in conjunction with those cities, and of course, Caltrans is involved in any project that affects the state or federal highway system. And therefore, uh, what we, what the proposal is, is if this is turned over to Sandbag, it would be followed the same as what they're doing in all the valley cities where they make freeway improvements or improvements that affect the freeway, such as over crossings, underpassings or interchanges. But again, we have, as opposed to the valley cities, where Sandbag makes the determination of where the priorities are and where the money will come from because it comes from a larger Sandbag pool, we are still going to be responsible for the funding. Fifty percent of that comes from Measure I, fifty percent must come from development funds. And that funding agreement, which will be structured by Sandbag, will have to be adhered to and approved by the council before you can move ahead. And i- if someone is not in agreement, um, then the project doesn't move ahead. So the, the funding agreement is something to be worked out with our financial department, uh, cooperation of the county. Apple Valley may or may not allocate their amount of money to this or to the part of the corridor, funding that we have from our major streets project, and then any other funding that, that Sandbag can have. And they are in the position to assist where we cannot find that additional funding.
All right, I didn't motion, uh, well, I'd, I'd like to make, uh, the motion that, uh, we officially hand the Lamesa and Nusqually interchange project over to, uh, Sandbag, San Bernardino Associated Governments.
You know, I'm, I'm struggling with this. I really want the Nusqually interchange as much as everyone does. But in light of hearing what Mr. Cox said regarding, we're still responsible for funding. We haven't got our funding. We are facing an audit saying we're going to be insolvent for a hundred million dollars in the hole. Um, it, it just, I just don't know, I just can't responsibly support a project that may never come to fruition or get us in deeper hole.
Well, I've been watching this project for twenty years, I guess. And we, we went through all the, um, all the environmental, um, processes and so on. It took us a long time. And, uh, obviously, if, if we, if the economic situation was better, we won't be in this position. But, but it's not. Uh, I think what happens here, and I, and I would, I, I'm reluctant also to turn control over to someone else. But in this, in this instance, I, 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 I know there's, uh, like Mr. Cox indicated, Sandbag has resources that we don't have presently. We want this project to move forward, uh, we have to go on the assumption that they're going to provide- going to provide those resources if this is a project, is that- is that correct?
Motion by Mayor McEckren, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Okay, we'll now move into, uh, council reports, agenda items, presentation of agenda items for upcoming city council meetings, I'll start with Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, nothing for future meetings.
I believe there's a- a personnel or, uh, Andre, can you elaborate on that, that we need to put on the agenda?
Uh, there's a question as to whether you wanna put it on the agenda, um, there is a memorandum I have done, uh, which is a privileged attorney-client privileged documentation submitted to all the council members, uh, some questions have been raised as to whether or not the council wants to consider waiving the privilege and making the information pertaining there too, uh, available to the public. Um, issue has actually been forwarded, the request of the city manager, to the FPPC for their review, and, uh, we- my- my correspondence, which is attorney-client privilege, is our preliminary analysis with a re- recommendation that the analysis be provided to the FPPC for, uh, a more formal opinion.
Who wants to waive the privilege?
I'm fine.
I- I- I, not at this time.
Um, the city attorney has rendered an opinion regarding a certain council member's conflict of interest, and I would like to release that opinion to the public, so I'm asking that it be agendized for the next council meeting.
And as I previously stated, I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry. You're fine with waiving privilege?
At one issue.
I, you know, I have to tell ya, I just think that is a- that's a terrible idea. We have a relationship with an attorney, and the only way we can count on the attorney to give us an opinion, when we ask for it, is if they know it's gonna be privileged. When you waive that privilege, he is never gonna know going forward whether the privilege is gonna be waived on an- on an analysis he does. And he never claimed it was the final word, the FPPC is gonna make the final word, it just makes no sense. I- you- I just think that's a terrible idea, ever, ever. That's why we have privileged communications between attorneys and clients. I mean, it- it's just, it's- it's damaging to the- it's a risky situation for the city, uh, when the attorney knows that any time he offers an opinion, the privilege could be waived. Makes no sense, I'm opposed to that completely.
Uh, well, I'm not sure I understand what your argument is, I mean, the attorney works for us, who pays the attorney are the taxpayers, the taxpayers have a right to know what's going on.
There are countless issues that we deal with the attorney that do not come out in the public until a decision is made, all the facts are in, the council makes a public decision. We don't- we don't take issues out to the public while they're in negotiation stage, when there's a potential for litigation, when our personnel matters and so on, there's a whole range of things that stay in closed session until decisions are made. That's the nature of this beast, that's why we have the Brown Act, that's why we have executives who are closed session, that's why we have attorney-client privilege in this country, it's a really important privilege to maintain. The fact of the matter is that this issue, because it will go to the FPPC, is gonna be public document, public record. What we're doing here is we're undermining a relationship with council, and it wouldn't matter if it was Andre D. Mortowski or any other attorney, when attorney is giving us, I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong, and- and attorney gives us an opinion, uh, especially when he knows it's an analysis, it may not even include all the facts, and we decide to make that opinion public, uh, when we know the FPPC is gonna consider this issue anyway. It completely undermines that relationship with the attorney, and I'm just opposed to it, and that's my argument, I think that's fairly clear.
Well, just so it's clear, that, uh, I don't have any issue with releasing it to the public, and if the individual did nothing wrong, then he shouldn't worry about it, so, I don't wanna be accused of covering anything up.
There are a number of issues that we deal with privately where nobody is doing anything wrong, but they have to be dealt with in closed session in the best interest of the city.
The only thing that-
That's the issue here, not the particular topic, it's the relationship with the attorney that's got to be inviolate. I- I- I mean, you don't agree with me, I don't care, I mean, you all do what you wanna do, I'm just completely opposed to this- this decision, so, you do what you want.
Well, if I- if I could jump in here, because I think it's important for two new council members to realize that this city council has already waived its attorney-client privilege, uh, with respect to grand jury, and so it's not unprecedented that we haven't done this before, um, and again, uh, my- my fear is, uh, that it- it gives the appearance that we're trying to hide something. Yeah, it'll go to the FPPC, but, um, uh, from my perspective, I just don't want it to appear that we're trying to hide something, so, I- that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, where does that end? Because every attorney-client communication that we receive is privileged. Where does that go, where does that end?
Well, I-
Are we hiding something on every privileged communication, is that the assumption?
No, Mr. Kennedy, there- there are certain issues that, like, personnel issues, obviously that- that should never come to the public, um, negotiations, but once, you know, the negotiations is- is over, it's- it's reported out, am I correct, Andre?
You are, once- once we have finalized real estate negotiations, they are reportable actions, correct?
If we're trying to s- find out if a council member had a conflict on an issue, how is that?
That will be resolved by the FPPC to- to jeopardize attorney-client privilege on that issue, undermine it, is- is- I'm just opposed to it, I think it's a terrible idea. I would never waive my privilege with my attorney, period, ever, ever, it just makes no sense, why would you do it? Mr. and Council-
Fair enough, I've made my point, right?
Um, I re- I directed, uh, that this be referred to the FPPC, uh, when I discussed with the attorney what the issue was, I have not discussed this with Mr. Cabralis or any other members of the council, uh, because in this kind of an instance, while the city attorney may under- render an opinion, that opinion can be challenged, and only the FPPC is the one that can issue the final, uh, the final opinion on this, and once the FPPC renders an opinion, which is what it quickly, it is public document at that time. And so, that's, otherwise, I would have never suggested that it go to the FPPC and the council deal with it, but it's not an issue that the council actually can deal with, and it's not an opinion that the city attorney can, it's not a- an opinion that's standing, because it can be challenged to the FPPC, and since they're the final authority on this, I requested it go to them, they will issue the opinion, that opinion is then public, once they make that determination. It's automatic, it's public, when they make the determination.
All right, so, uh, on that item, um, you have a request, I'm okay with it, you're against it, that's it. Um, so that's T2, it doesn't go anywhere, is that correct?
That's correct, you need a majority to go forward.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to, um, agendize an RFP for a full-service law firm, I think we owe it to the people to shop for the best price for a city attorney.
All right, now you're hearing a second at this point, is there another item?
Yes, I'd like to have a- a agendize for a discussion of term limits for city council members.
I'll second that. You in favor?
You wanna agendize it, that's fine with me.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Um, and, at this point, I- I don't have anything additional, I'd just like to thank you all for showing up.
I have- I have one issue I'd like to at least address, because we were all notified-
Oh, and I'm sorry, I- we need to get in councilmore comments, so go ahead.
Uh, last Tuesday night, there was a fairly ugly incident here at City Hall, uh, with people, uh, who showed up for a meeting, uh, and got angry at, uh, our security people, and I guess there was a little bit of a, I don't know, but it was a dangerous incident, but it was sheer unpleasant for our city staff, and a lot of criticism, and people claiming that- that, uh, information was withheld, and they weren't allowed into the meeting, and there was, I don't know, what, the staff figured out anything about what happened there and how that came about?
I have some information on that. I was, um, contacted by our city staff, a couple of staff members that were working that Tuesday night, there was not a council meeting, it was an off Tuesday, um, but apparently there was, uh, quite a group of people that showed up, and they, um, you know, were insisting that there was a council meeting, they had been advised, and one of them even said that I personally sent them an email advising them of a meeting, and the staff was trying to explain that- that, um, you know, they- they didn't know where they got the information from, but they were sure that there wasn't a meeting, but that we did have a special meeting the prior Tuesday, and, um, and- and a couple of the people that were there said that, um, they were told that that was a closed session meeting, and that it was not open to the public, and one of our staff that had been working that night said that she knew that it was a public meeting because she was working, so she was aware that it was open to the public. So, I'm not sure where the misinformation came from, but yeah, apparently, they were very angry and, um, made the staff a little bit nervous, so, yeah.
Well, I just like the record to reflect to those folks who thought they were being kept out of the meeting, there was no meeting, I don't know if any of those folks are here tonight, but, uh, there was no meeting.
Uh, in the last council meeting, I think it was a regular one, um, I requested that, um, we have an inter-fund loan policy, and I wasn't sure where we were at on that.
Uh, I reviewed that policy this morning, actually, and, uh, it's in final draft, uh, it's that one, uh, at this point, it appears it's gonna be an administrative policy signed by the city manager, I would expect it'll probably be signed by the end of the week, and we'll, uh, send a copy to the entire council once that's done.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then also, um, I'm- I- I brought up in the last council meeting that, um, I was concerned because Mr. Cox's contract is going to be expiring in June, and I didn't know how, um, or, you know, if he's gonna stay, or- or we need time to- to recruit, or what's happening in that area.
It'll be on the next council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I have nothing additional to add, so, we will, um, we're actually adjourning this meeting to, uh-
It will be at five PM on Thursday, the fourteenth.
All right.
And that will be here.
Here at, uh, the City Hall with the City of Esperry, the City Council, so if you'd like to participate in that, thank you.